Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council meeting agenda for this Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Bokey. Councilmember Bran Sutter.
Here.
For Laura Sella.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whalen.
Present.
We have a forum.
Thank you very much. Now, if you'd please all stand and join me in a brief moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving this country at home and abroad, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic over its sands. My nation, under God, is faithful, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it's great to see all of you here and all of you at home on Zoom or attending via our livestream. We're pleased tonight to have the police commissioning ceremony, and tonight I'd ask that our municipal court judge Lisa Mansfield conduct the oath of office for both our new police chief, Patrick Smith, and Officer Dylan Warburton. So we'll first start with the chief on his own and then Officer Warburton. Judge Mansfield. And as we typically do, Chief, we do a photograph at the end, so, you know, be prepared to smile.
It is my pleasure and honor to be here to swear you in, and good evening, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, Sir John Coffield, family and friends. I'm Lisa Mansfield, and I preside over Lakewood Municipal Court, which also serves our veterans' treatment court. So without further ado, if you'll raise your right hand. After me, I state your name. Solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States and of the State of Washington. That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States. The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington and the laws of the city of Lakewood. And will to the best of my judgment, skill, and ability truly, faithfully, diligently, and impartially perform the duties of the Office of Police Chief in and for the city of Lakewood in Pierce County, Washington, as such duties are prescribed by law.
Ms. Grimley, would you prefer that we do the photo now with the chief or at the end with both commissioners? At the end. Very good. Okay. Thank you very much. Officer Warburton. Welcome.
Well, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Dylan James Warburton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the State of Washington.
And of the State of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the State of Washington.
And laws, the State of Washington.
And the laws of the city of Lakewood.
And the laws and the city of Lakewood.
And will to the best of my judgment, skill, and ability.
And to the best of my will, judgment.
And will to the best of my judgment.
And will to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly, faithfully, diligently.
Truly, faithfully, and diligently.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of the Office of Police Officer.
And the Office of Police Officer.
In and for the city of Lakewood.
In and for the city.
And Pierce County, Washington.
And Pierce County, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
Congratulations.
Okay, Officer Warburton, if you want to go ahead and take a quick photo with your family first, and then we'll come on up and do a group photo with the city council, but your family looks a lot better than the rest of us, so let's do that one first. We'll get out of the way, so. Well, Chief, on the heels of that, you and I are going to be presenting a proclamation declaring May fifteenth through May twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three as National Police Week. So if you join me at the podium, we'll prepare and receive a proclamation together. Well, Chief, first of all, on behalf of all of us here at the city of Lakewood, we welcome you, and we're excited certainly to have you onboard. We understand that you're now fully trained to give each of us a speeding ticket. So that'll be fantastic that you've gone through the training. But in all seriousness, we very much appreciate the department and all of the officers and very much respect the work you do. I hope you understand that we're committed. We fully fund our police department, and we very much respect all of the officers who come to work in Lakewood, and we're appreciative for your, your fine professional service. The city of Lakewood is pleased to also present this proclamation recognizing National Police Week. Whereas each May during the week surrounding May fifteenth, our nation salutes the American men and women who put their lives on the line every day to maintain public safety and to hold accountable those who break the law. And whereas over the last three years, the COVID-nineteen pandemic placed first responders at additional risk, dramatically impacting how they interact with the public and presenting challenges never faced before. And whereas there are more than nine hundred thousand sworn law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the ninety-nine dedicated members of the Lakewood Police Department. And whereas nearly sixty thousand assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately seventeen thousand injuries. And whereas since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, more than twenty-one thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have been killed in the line of duty, including four members of our own here at the Lakewood Police Department in two thousand and nine. And whereas it is with heavy hearts we mourn the heroes taken from us only because they chose to serve. And we rededicate ourselves to carrying forward their noble legacy. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls in the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. Now therefore be resolved that the Lakewood City Council officially recognizes May fifteenth through May twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three as National Police Week here in the city of Lakewood. And we publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across this great nation. Proclaim this fifteenth day of May, two thousand and twenty-three, Jason Whalen, Mayor. So thank you, Chief. Fabulous to have you onboard, and we'd invite you to say a few words in light of this incredible honor week that we have.
First, I just want to say I'm very thankful for today. I'm thankful for the opportunity to serve as Chief of Police here in the city of Lakewood. Each year, officers across the country join other officers in Washington to celebrate Police Week in honor of those who have gone before us, those who've served their community in heroic fashion. Those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice. Unfortunately, I recognize many of the names across many of the placards in different cities. Some who have served right alongside, beside me, some who went through the academy with me, others who were on departments with me, and some who I've gone and spoke at their funeral. And so with a heavy heart, and it cuts very deep inside, I accept the proclamation. I'm very thankful that the city recognizes the service that officers do on a daily basis and the fact that they're willing to go out and serve people, some of whom who could care less about them, some who would do nothing for them. But we serve because we recognize that that's their right, and we will respect their right, and we will continue to defend and serve their right. And I appreciate the people of this city. I appreciate everyone who have welcomed me here and those who didn't. And that's okay. I will continue to serve to the best of my ability and do my job to the best of my ability and continue to represent the city of Lakewood in true fashion of law enforcement. Thank you so much.
Mr. Ott, how are you?
Well, thank you. Next, we have a proclamation declaring May twenty-one through May twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three as National Public Works Week. And for this proclamation, we have Weston Ott, our Engineering Services Manager, who will be with Councilmember Laura Sella at the podium. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Ott, for being here. I, I truly value our Public Works Department and, and all the things that you guys do for us, so. Without further ado, I will get started. So whereas Public Works professional focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of people. And whereas these services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting transportation routes, water, sewers, storm drainage, streets, solid waste collection, public buildings, and other structures for our residents. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of our community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the skill of Public Works officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff our Public Works Engineering Department is materially influenced by the public's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore Lakewood City Council proclaims the week of May twenty-first through May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three as National Public Works Week in the city of Lakewood. And we hereby recognize the daily contributions of our Public Works personnel to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Proclaimed this fifteenth day of May, two thousand and twenty-three, and signed by Jason Whalen, our mayor.
Thank you on behalf of the city of Lakewood's Public Works Engineering Department for recognizing National Public Works Week. We appreciate the council's support of both the Public Works Engineering Department and the city's capital projects program. The theme this year for National Public Works Week is connecting the world through public works. Public works is the thread that connects all of us, no matter where we live in the world. Every public works professional strives to improve the quality of life for the community they serve, leading to healthier and happier communities. Public Works employees keep communities strong by providing an infrastructure of services and transportation, water, wastewater, stormwater treatment, publics, buildings and spaces, parks and grounds, emergency management, and solid waste. These types of projects are what make our communities great places to live and work, showing us and celebrating the quiet work that Public Works employees do to make life better for all of us. Here at the city of Lakewood, it is another year of infrastructure construction, and the sprouting of orange cones and barrels is in full swing, which we get to admire as we slow down through construction zones. We currently have many projects, active projects. This includes the completion of JBLM North, Washington Boulevard, and Vernon. Silicon Boulevard is wrapping up today. They were setting streetlight poles or streetlight, uh, street lighting poles. The work on Angle Elwood started today. We have the work on one hundred and twelve street front of Clover Park High School is going to start soon. And then upcoming, we have the work on Union Avenue adding the sidewalk to follow this year, just to name a few of the near-term projects. I want to again thank the council on behalf of the Public Works Engineering Department for recognizing National Public Works Week and for your support of the Public Works Engineering Department. Thank you.
Do you want to take a photograph? So we'll come on down for a photograph, Mr. Ott, but I just want to personally thank you and all the members of the Public Works staff for doing the incredible work that has led to interconnecting neighborhoods with the central business district and other commercial corridors, providing better and improved access to our parks around the city and doing all with, you know, a great sense of professionalism. I take one exception. I don't think your work is quiet work. People would say, on the other hand, that some of the work has been quite noisy, but they appreciate it when it's done. So. Thank you. Come on. Yours?
Yeah.
The old standard. Well, that ends the proclamation and presentation section of tonight's agenda. We now move to public comments. Public comments are accepted by mail, e-mail, or live, virtual, or in-person comment. Comments may be sent in advance by mail or email to the city clerk, Brianna Schumacher, at six thousand Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or to her email address, bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the council electronically. The clerk will now read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance.
Mayor, we received written comments in advance from James Dunlop.
Very good. And the reason we announce that is so that if a member who has provided written comments is in the audience, we want to acknowledge the fact that we have received a written comment, and they may present the same comment orally tonight, but they need not because we have received a comment. Members of the audience may comment on items related to any matter pertaining to city business under the public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Virtual comments, as indicated, are accepted. If you'd like to provide live virtual public comments, you'll need to join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by dialing the telephone number listed on the screen and entering the meeting ID number as indicated. Upon entering the meeting, please use the raise the hand feature to be called upon, so we can acknowledge those who wish to be uh, to, to address council in the public comment period. And when you're unmuted, please provide your name and city of residence, and then proceed with your three minutes to speak. So I first will call on those who have signed up or raised their hand to address the council virtually during the public comment period, followed by those who have signed in on the sign-in sheet to address council. And then, as I often say, even if you didn't have a chance to sign in on the sheet, you're always welcome to address the council during the public comment period. Just feel free to queue up to the podium, and we'll be glad to have you and glad to hear what you have to say. Okay, those who are on Zoom, Madam Clerk, do we have any individuals who wish to speak during the public comment period? Great. Looks like Mr. Haugen is first with a hand raised, followed by Tukamir Dunlop, and then someone by the name of Kim.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Dennis Haugen here, Sioux Falls. He used to be a resident of Lakewood. It was, uh, it was great to hear that somebody noticed the test scores of the school district in the last meeting that you had. It was nineteen eighty-four. That's almost forty years ago that I showed a lady some houses in Lakewood. And she, then she was gone for a couple of days, and she'd been doing her research. And the first thing she told me when I met her about three days later was we don't want to look at many more houses in Lakewood. That's forty years ago. And, um, there's a difference in test scores, of course. That's what we're talking about. That's the way we measure. But it was interesting that we, in, in the last forty years, in my opinion, you've had one superintendent who really focused on the problem. He didn't last very long, but I think he got a much better job with higher pay somewhere else. But, um, he, uh, there was a great commotion because he was measuring what the students were doing. And, um, a lot of people didn't like that. So they made a lot of commotion. And then, of course, later on, Norm Dick's got in trouble because he found out the military was was recommending other communities besides Lakewood. And, but of course, that's mostly been ignored because you have these meetings where you allow the school board to come in and just talk about the few top kids that, uh, would probably do well even without your school. And then there's another thing that's interesting to note. You know, another subject. Illegal immigrants. Well, as you've probably been watching, that suddenly New York has become overcome with illegal immigrants. A lot to do with the fact that Texas was helping ship them up there. And now they're making a fuss. Well, then New York City then pushes them out to the suburbs. And now they're really starting to, uh, they even asked that the state today get rid of its sanctuary city situation. And, um, and, uh, it's interesting, but I, I, I always felt that sooner or later Seattle would start pushing the problem in your direction. And it appears that that's what's happening. Because all of these immigrants has to do with math. It's amazing that nobody could figure out if you put five million people in the system, services and house prices and everything else are going to be affected. Thank you very much.
Next is Tukamir Dunlop. Mr. Dunlop.
Oh, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so I'd like to make a couple of comments about tree regulations in general. So I, one thing I've noticed is that the way tree regulations are approached is very much on a tree-by-tree basis, like, you know, under a circum circumference, you're free to cut something down without a permit, or on a particular lot, lot size, you're allowed to do something without a permit, and very much it's on a tree-by-tree basis. Um, but the only thing that's more important than a single tree is, you know, the entire forest cover of Lakewood or any city. And I feel like a, a lot of regulation in general is not really looking at this, you know, big picture of all, all, you know, the cumulative impact of, um, trees being cut down. Um, like, for example, you know, in the Ad hoc Tree Committee, which was on, we set a, a goal for tree cover. And that's all well, all well and good, but, um, goals aren't solutions. And the other day, I saw a very nice big fir tree get cut down. Um, I remember it provided a lot of shade where it was, and, you know, on the ground, the logs of it were almost as wide as a person is tall. And, you know, sometimes when trees are cut down, there's a good reason for it, like it might be rotten, but no, it was perfectly healthy inside. Uh, and that's another tree gone. And every day, you know, it seems like more trees are disappearing. And there's this disconnect between that canopy goal and, um, what's actually happening in Lakewood. Um, so I, I really feel like there's a, there's a disconnect there. Like, you know, some people say that, you know, it's fine that trees are cut down because we're planting new trees. But guess who also says that? Um, in Canada, they're clearcutting old growth forests to make toilet paper. And they say it's fine because for every tree they cut down, they plant three more. And then if you go back to the forests that were clear-cut thirty years ago, um, it's nothing like the old growth forests because all the trees are the same age. So if we cut down our trees and then plant new ones, sure, that seems fine. But, uh, in the future, we're going to have a problem that we're not going to have a healthy diversity of ages of trees. We need to protect the old trees we have now because we're, we're not going to, you know, have a magic button to accelerate time by two hundred years to get old mature trees that, uh, sequester carbon. Um, so, uh, you know, a healthy tree cover is both old trees and young trees. So I, I think we need to really look at tree regulation in a more kind of big picture sense instead of a tree-per-tree sense. Um, so yeah, just a couple of things I wanted to say. I, I know that the Ad hoc Tree Committee and everything is over, but uh, just want to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last hand that I see raised, uh, representing individuals wishing to address the council virtually. Do you see anything that I'm missing, Madam Clerk, or any person?
Mayor, there are no other hands raised.
Okay, very good. We'll turn to the sign-in sheet. First individual, Daisy Harden.
Hello. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak today and forgive me. I'm a little nervous, but I will try to speak as elegantly as I can because I respect everybody in this place. Um, my problem is mainly with drugs and crime in Lakewood, especially in place. My problem is mainly with drugs and crime in Lakewood, especially in Canterbury Village. They have burnt the dumpsters, ventilized cars, there's transients walking around, doing drugs on the site in daylight during school hours where our children have to walk out there and go to school and catch the bus. I've asked them to repair the fence. It hasn't gotten repaired. I asked them to put more cameras on the property. It haven't gotten done. Okay, sorry. And I've asked them all kinds of solutions. I have cameras myself for my home, for my safety, for fear. They ventilized my Kia. It's just, the police are always out there. There's people who are clean and sober, who are trying to stay clean and sober. Me, one. And I don't appreciate drug addicts being around me, using drugs in front of my face. My daughter and me were sitting in the car. My grandchildren was going to come over for a visit. Here, a drug addict is openly using drugs during the time that children have to get on the bus. So now my grandkids cannot come to visit me at all. I am so disturbed by this. I'm a disabled vet. I have worked hard for my sobriety. I've worked hard for my mental health. I'm bipolar. I have PTSD, and I have anxiety. And I fought hard to get where I am today. I go to school. I got 3.3 at Tacoma Community College. I have a nice home. I own one car, the Kia, and I'm working on owning my Ford Frontier truck. I have worked hard to be a law-abiding citizen, follow every law to the T, except where I got one speeding ticket because my daughter was sick, and he gave me forgiveness. He didn't give me as much as I should have got for that penalty, which I'm grateful for. But other than that, I haven't had any liabilities. So I'm asking you to please help me. I don't know where else to go, what else to do, because I'm not being heard by my landlord or the owners. And I live there. I'm disabled, and it's difficult to move. I need help, and the people who are disabled need help. And here's some pictures. I started not to leave them, but I-
That would be great. Ma'am, if you could just please go ahead and state your name and residence for the record.
My name is Daisy Harden, and I'm a disabled vet that lives in Canterbury Village Apartments.
Canterwood?
Canterbury Village Apartments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I normally don't give a colloquy back, but I do want to let you know that the city council did pass an ordinance criminalizing open drug use last month. And so that ordinance is going to be in effect. And so I will have staff follow up and see if they might be able to come out to that location and take a look and see what kind of activity is going on. Thank you. Next, Al Schmatter.
My name is Al Schmatter. I'm the stewardship chair for the Chambers Clover Watershed Council. I live in Lacey. This council proclaimed last week as Drinking Water Week, and stated, "We are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend." Last week, Mayor Wayland attended a presentation which concluded urbanization killed Clover Creek in Parkland, and was reducing stream flow in Lakewood. I asked Mr. Wayland, "What could I do?" And he said, "Well, present a proposal to the city council." So my proposal, so Mayor Wayland, I'm here tonight at your suggestion. My proposal follows the format of a proclamation, because that's what we're good at around here. Whereas, water is a fundamental part of our everyday lives and serves as the basic support system for all life on our planet. And whereas Clover Creek is no longer flowing in Parkland, stream flow dropped 70% in Lakewood, January, February, March, and April this year. This year was the lowest level, last year was the lowest level at Silicon Lake, in eight years of data collection down there. Whereas, there are no comprehensive measures of the water withdrawn or impact of stream flow in the Chambers Creek watershed. And whereas, decision-makers cannot manage that which they cannot measure. Whereas, water is our most valuable natural resource, now therefore, the city council should take action to coordinate with Pierce County Water Purveyors and Tacoma Pierce County Health Department to implement a coordinated long-term groundwater monitoring program for the Chambers Clover watershed. Now, "Don't bring me just problems," my manager, my boss used to say, "Bring me some solutions." Now, here's what I might suggest. The first step would be to meet with involved entities and determine who and how the program would be implemented. Look at the 2005 groundwater study conducted by the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department as a potential model to be restarted. And I kind of think that the Pierce, the Health Department would probably be the most independent agency to conduct a long-term program. To assist initial funding on the program, put a pause on this request to, on the proposal, on the RFP, request for proposal, to treat, re-treat Wahop Lake. Place the $215,000 of grant funding in a reserve account for the monitoring program. Request that Pierce County match Lakewood's contribution to the reserve account. The council agreed to give Pierce County $1 million for the community village. Why couldn't they return $215,000 to you? So, long-term funding could be established when the estimated costs are determined. Water purveyors will likely be involved in setting up funding sources. There's a city council meeting on the 26th of June with Lakewood. This should be on the topic, groundwater monitoring. Nobody knows what's going on. There's no sheriff in town. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Schmatter.
Any questions?
Well, I'm sure we'll have some, but we'll chew on it and chat about it. Thank you very much. Next, Connie Meyer.
Good evening, and thank you. I really appreciate you making it Public Works Week when I'm here. So I'm here to talk to you about a project. My name is Connie Meyer. I'm from Graham, Washington. I work for Active Construction. We are here tonight to talk to you about the award that is pending for Neely Construction and the Fort Silicon Park Athletic Field Project. We have addressed this. We bid this, and we addressed this through your city attorney here. She's aware of what's going on. We're here to make the councilmen, councilpeople aware of what is going on here, and we would like for your consideration in our bid. We were actually number three, but the first two bidders failed to mention that there was a plumber needed. Now, that might sound minor to you, but I've been doing this since 1987. So I'm a little bit of a seasoned person in public works. And during my process of putting this bid together, I recognized that there was work that was going to involve a licensed plumber. By the RCW law of 39.30.060, we are obligated to list HVAC plumbing and electrical contractors that we intend to use for this project. Neely Construction and Specialized Landscaping did not mention a plumbing contractor. Neely Construction in itself absolutely said, "No subcontractor will be needed." Your city attorney mentioned that, yes, it says on sheet F142 that there was work that was shown that was going to be needed for a licensed plumber. But this is not being recognized. We are a responsible, a responsive low bidder. The first two, Neely Construction and Specialized Landscaping, should be deemed by the council. They are non-responsive. They did not follow Washington state law, which subjects the person that decides to go around this, circumvent Washington state law to civil penalties. We just would like for you to consider rejecting bidder one, Neely Construction, bidder two, Specialized Landscaping, and deem Active Construction as the low responsive bidder, or we ask that you reject all bids.
Thank you.
Oh, I have more to say, but I'll let it go there.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Al Hove.
Hi, my name is Al Hove. I signed in, but I'll go ahead and reserve my remarks for the presentation by Partners for Parks.
Very good, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
You were just so happy to be here, you wanted to sign in, right? Next, Christina Minetti.
Christina Minetti, Lakewood. Hello, Mayor Wayland. Hello, council members. Today I have two environmental issues I'd like to bring to your attention and ask your action on. The first is about the planned Fort Silicon baseball fields. You're approving a contract with Neely Construction Company, or maybe you're not approving it, I'm not sure, to make the new baseball fields with a fiscal impact of almost $7.2 million. In light of the best available science, my colleagues and I ask that you take into account community concerns about the installation of synthetic turf made of chrome rubber, a known toxin. We ask that you ensure that an alternative be chosen that will be safe for both young and adult athletes to use without fear of falling ill with cancer. Any material that is chosen should also be safe for the environment, particularly the groundwater, which ultimately also affects the water quality in our salmon-bearing creeks and, of course, Puget Sound. We do not want even more toxic fish-killing, 6PPD quinine in Lakewood's water. We have enough toxins as it is. Remember cumulative impact. Those tons of toxic chrome rubber will be disintegrating also for 10 to, eight to 10 years, I don't know, maybe longer, releasing 6PPD quinine into the ground until the fields are replaced. It's not forever that you put that stuff down. There is also the issue of Wahop Lake. The city of Lakewood recently published a request for proposals for the 2023 Wahop Lake alum treatment, a repeat of the devastating 2020 alum treatment from which the lake has not yet recovered. As you are probably aware, the lake no longer has aquatic plants to support water fowl. Migratory birds no longer frequent it, and the turtles, frogs, and fish, except for some invasive carp, have disappeared. While paying someone to pour tons and tons of toxic chemicals into the beleaguered lake is certainly an easy solution, my colleagues and I ask you to consider other more beneficial solutions that would restore the lake to a healthy state, a healthy and functional state. I have been advised that it would be possible, for example, to create an artificial wetland in order to bind the phosphorus, as is done around the world, also in countries much poorer than the United States. This is a far less expensive proposition at about $20,000 per acre, and would result in a product that the city could actually sell, mulch fertilizer, I'm not sure what you call it. The resulting wetland could also serve to educate the public, which we really need here in Lakewood. We ask that the city consider this and other alternatives that would restore the lake to a healthy state rather than merely poison it repeatedly for exorbitant sums so that it is free of toxic algae blooms. The alum treatment will have to be repeated indefinitely. Someone only half-jokingly told me once that in the modern world, there are only two states, toxic or sterile. We want neither. We want Lakewood to show that it has the initiative to be the steward of the environment that it purports to be. We want a healthy lake and toxin-free water. Remember, water is life. Thank you.
Next is James Dunlop.
Hello, my name is James Dunlop, and I'm a resident of Lakewood. I want to continue with what I was talking about two weeks ago, Lakewood's education system. I think the problem here, as I said two weeks ago, is that you have the school board, and you have the city council, and they supposedly have different, different areas, you know, perhaps from your perspective, you regard Lakewood's education system as kind of ultra-varies. But there seems to be a problem that actually maybe you're concerned, maybe you should be concerned about. I sent you in my written comment a graph which shows what has been happening to Lakewood's test results since 2015. Basically, they are falling off a cliff, and it's got nothing to do with COVID. I mean, okay, it has got something to do with COVID in an absolute sense, but when you make a comparison between Lakewood's mean scores and the state's mean scores, there is a growing, there is a growing disparity. Now, I do understand that many on the school board, many teachers will tell you that test scores should be, you know, don't mean anything. And it's strange that I find myself kind of agreeing with Mr. Haugen. But I think they do mean something. And if you are perhaps have a vested interest in the status quo, you have to say, "Well, status, you know, we can ignore test scores." So the question is, what is going on? Why are, why is the education system in Lakewood declining? It does affect the city, as I think Mr. Haugen said. People do look at, people look, you know, when they're buying property, they do look at, you know, what is it, the great schools ratings, and whatever, you can see 2 out of 10, 3 out of 10, and it does affect, it does affect the city. So the question is, what is going on? Now, it may be that the school system, that Clover Park School District is simply, is simply like a thermometer. It's just an indicator of what's happening in the city. It may be that the Clover, you know, the Clover Park School District, whatever they do, whoever is elected onto the school board, it makes absolutely no difference. And that's possibly the case. So I think, as a city council, I do think you need to consider what is going on in the school district. And you can't just say, "Well, it's someone else's responsibility," because it is affecting the city. And, you know, what I would like, not just with the schools, not just with schools, but with the library, with the environment, what I think would be good in the city is to have some kind of discussion, not a discussion organized by Burke Consultancy, but where people in Lakewood can discuss what they think. And so you might be able to create an intellectual environment for actually dealing with these problems.
That is the last individual who has signed up to address council during the public comment period. But as always, if you didn't have a chance to sign in, don't let that deter you. You're welcome to approach the podium and have your, your moment in time. Are there any other individuals wishing to address council during the public comment period? Going once, going twice? Not sold, but public comment period is closed. We now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of April 24, 2023; B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of May 1, 2023; C, motion number 2023-53, approval of a construction contract with Neely Construction Company for the Fort Silicon Park Athletic Field Project; D, items filed in the office of the city clerk, one, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board meeting minutes of March 2, 2023; two, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of March 28, 2023; three, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of April 3, 2023; four, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of April 12, 2023; and five, Planning Commission meeting minutes of April 19, 2023.
Thank you very much. A fairly light consent agenda. Is there any item which any council member wishes to remove from consideration at this time? Mr. Branstadter?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item C.
Do I have a motion to adopt a consent agenda as presented minus item C? It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Moss, second to my council member Anderson, that we adopt a consent agenda minus item C, which is motion 2023-53. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the consent agenda minus item C, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda minus item C has been adopted. We now turn to motion number 2023-53. This is approval of a construction contract with Neely Construction Company for the Fort Silicon Park Athletic Field Project. Do I have a motion to adopt motion 2023-53 for purposes of getting it on the table for discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move adoption of motion 2023-53.
I think I heard Councilmember Anderson move. I'll consider your acknowledgement a second. I think I heard Councilmember Anderson move. I'll consider your acknowledgement a second to adopt motion 2023-53. Is there any further discussion, or would you like to have the city attorney provide some explanatory remarks, Mr. Branstadter?
Well, what I was looking at, I am trying to just clarify, the request for council action spoke to the fact that there had been a protest filed about the bids. And it rather not wasn't real specific about what the protest was, other than saying that it was minor and that it was something that the city was prepared to waive. And then we had in public comment, we had someone with a more specific description of what it was that didn't sound minor, okay, in terms of the citizens' comment. And I kind of wanted to get a discussion about what kind of a protest that we have, what does the city's "prepared to waive" mean? And what is the actual process that would go forward? Should we approve this motion to still move forward to resolve the protest?
Thank you, Mr. Branstadter. I see our city attorney approaching the podium. And I would ask, in addition, I'd just kind of provide as best you can some legal context as to what a minor irregularity is in the statute.
Mayor Wayland, Deputy Mayor Moss, members of the council, Heidi Walker, city attorney for the city of Lakewood. As you know, I've practiced exclusively municipal law for over 30 years. And unfortunately, I'm going to start with the more legitimate question. And it is as to where we are in the process and what your role is as a city council. So what you have before you is basically thumbs up or thumbs down on our asking you to award a contract. You don't actually play a role in the protest. The way the protest works, it can serve as a reason for a thumbs down, but you don't have to find a protest in order to give a thumbs down. That is exclusively your province. You've got the recommendation from your employees who are specialized in this. So where the protest comes into play is, and active enterprises did what they were supposed to do. And I analogize it to putting a flag on the play. And the first way that you do that is you send a letter saying, this isn't right. We get that we came in third, but those guys were supposed to put the plumber in. Okay, fine, we wrote back, and we specifically said, it is our intention on May 15 to award the bid to Neely. We did that timely. We did that, the letter was dated May 10. I'm not sure they got it till the next day. But after we've let two days go from there, then we can go ahead and award the contract. And so you're thinking, well, what is somebody supposed to do if they're not happy about that? What they were supposed to do is go to the proper forum for their protest, and the proper forum for the protest is the court. And people get excited about things like TROs, Temporary Restraining Order and all that. That's not exciting if you practice in the area. For us, it's the flag on the play. They didn't throw the flag on the play timely. And so you are free to award to Neely at this point. And one of the questions I would ask you to ask yourself is if, as council member Branstadter suggests, this was a very significant thing that was missed somewhere in the bidding, why wouldn't you take it to court? And they didn't. Instead, they're coming here to try and sort of have their one-sided comment carry the day. I'm sorry if that sounds a little harsh, but that's what you're looking at. I'd be happy to try and answer your other questions, because I have answers to those as well, but in reality, the door closed.
Thank you. Any further questions of the city attorney?
I would just like to get an understanding of what are the standards associated with the city being prepared to waive irregularities? I mean, obviously, it's very minor and technical, and being able to do that, that makes sense. But I'm just sort of wondering, is there a standard that we? Or is this actually something we do frequently?
No, I had researched this matter, councilmember Branstadter, members of the council. And one of the features of something that is considered to be a minor irregularity is when it is such a small part of the project that it doesn't carry the day. And this is 0.24 of 1% of the project. And it's also an irregularity because of the way something was listed in the bid, but in point of fact, the contractor has a plumber. So there's that whole question, and I think some of the issue is as to the timeliness, whether it should have been put in the bid specs. You run down a bit of a rabbit hole at that point, but as I said, the proper forum for that debate is the courtroom. Put the flag on the play, and we can have a proper discussion of it.
Mr. Anderson?
Just to clarify, the work in question would have to be, no matter who did it, would have to be performed by a licensed plumber, is that correct?
Correct.
And this doesn't change the gross value of the bids in any way?
It does not, and Ms. Dodsworth is here, but if I understood her correctly, it would take a lot of change in the low bidder for it to move down in the ranks.
And what would the timing of the cycle be if we rejected all bids?
If you reject all bids, the city would probably, it would take a bit to regroup and make sure we understood why there wasn't just one bidder that bid it this way. There were two lower bidders that bid it exactly the way the low bidder did. And we would have to figure out what happened there and whether or not there's really a point to this protest and if there would be a different result going around. So we'd go through all that, for however long that would take, and then we would put it out for bids again and go through the process. Now, I'm going to guess on this, and Ms. Dodsworth is here and can correct me. In the world of people who have experienced putting in baseball fields, it's probably not the largest pool of groups out there, and we would probably get the same bidders back on the next go-around.
Days. How long?
Yeah, six weeks.
Six weeks?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any further questions of Ms. Walker or any further discussion? Well, we have a motion on the table. That motion is 2023-53 to approve, as recommended by staff, the award of a construction contract with Neely Construction Company for the Fort Silicon Park Athletic Field Project. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion 2023-53 has been adopted. We now move to the regular agenda ordinances. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 785, amending the 2023 to 2024 biennial budget.
Thank you for this. We have our deputy city manager, Todd Kraus. Will provide a brief overview to council before we move to adopt ordinance 785.
Good evening, mayor and council members. This item was presented to you on April 24, and a public hearing was held on May 1. There have been no changes since those presentations were made, and the proposed budget adjustment is in compliance with the financial policies. We maintain the required reserves in the general fund, and all of the expenditures are proposed to be spent appropriately to their funding source. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, and I will echo your comment. We did review this in significant detail at the study session. We've also provided laudatory comments for the work of both you, certainly in your staff, for the fine work in wrapping up the year-end 2022 budget adjustments. Are there any further questions of Ms. Kraus at this time? Mr. Branstadter.
Thanks, Mayor. Ms. Kraus, I just had a question about the relationship between Fund 204, which is essentially the sewer debt fund, which is where we collect the surcharge, and Fund 311, which is the sewer projects CIP. And generally, funding from 204 is transferred to 311 to do that. And there are a number of projects that have adjustments that are in Fund 311, sewer projects that had some budget adjustments to do that. And in the summaries of the funding for those projects, they show that there is some funding transferred from 204 into the project. But there's not actually a budget adjustment in 204. 204 has no budget adjustments. It's still showing the same as it was when we adopted it at the beginning of the biennium. Is that because changes have to do with some other source of funding within those projects that have an adjustment? Or what's the relationship there that causes one needing to be adjusted, but the other not?
Sure. So the 204 fund provides the transfers to various sewer projects. Those transfers are typically made as part of the adopted budget process. So for 23 and 24, we've already identified the source for the capital funds. Any projects that received funding from Fund 204 was done in the previous years. So for 2022, those transfers have already been made. So it really is continuation of projects in the capital fund, but no new source coming from the 204 fund, and that's why you're not seeing it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions of Ms. Kraus? If not, do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 785? It's been moved by Councilmember Bell, second of my councilmember Bokey, that we adopt ordinance 785. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of 785 signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ordinance number 785 has been adopted. We now turn to ordinance 786. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 786, amending Chapter 9.06 of the Lakewood Municipal Code related to Controlled Substances.
For this, I'll call on our city attorney, Ms. Walker, provide some feedback and overview on ordinance proposed 786.
Mayor Wayland, Deputy Mayor Moss, members of the council. I'm going to start somewhere in the middle, actually. This afternoon at 4 o'clock, the legislature released what I will call, air quotes, "a plan" of what they might do tomorrow when they reconvene in special session. And I would encourage you to watch it with great interest, but do not hesitate to act tonight in anticipation of what they might do. A couple of weeks ago, I attended a meeting of various people throughout the county to talk about the situation in which we've been placed, in large part by our legislature, first by the court and then later by the legislature. And we were encouraged, and I think Lakewood is very willing to do this, to adopt something and not wait for the legislature to act. And what is proposed to you is what we acted on after Blake came down, but before the legislature preempted us. And what it is is simply to say that the knowing possession of controlled substances is a violation of law in the city of Lakewood. It's a gross misdemeanor. What could happen? It looks like what's being proposed will not preempt that. It looks like they're seeking to preempt possession of drug paraphernalia rather than possession of controlled substances. So again, I would encourage you, if you have an interest in that being illegal, this is something for you. I put a lot more words in the agenda bill. If there are certain sections of that you want me to delve into, I'd be happy to do so. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of Ms. Walker? Mr. Anderson? Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Been moved by Councilmember Anderson, second of my councilmember Laura Sell, that we adopt ordinance 786. Any further discussion? I will just say, I met with the county executive at his request last Thursday. We had a little bit of an interview with the Tacoma News Tribune, the county executive, the Pierce County prosecutor, and I was asked to be present on behalf of certain cities in Pierce County. And to a T, the cities in the county are moving forward with some action. Not interested in waiting for the legislature to act, legislature to act, even though they certainly may this week during the special session. But I think now is the appropriate time to take action. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of adoption of ordinance number 786 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ordinance number 786 has been adopted unanimously. We now turn to unfinished business. Is there anything to attend to, Mr. Coffield?
There is not, Mayor.
New business, including motion 2023-54. Madam Clerk.
Motion number 2023-54, approving an intergovernmental transfer agreement between Pierce County and the city of Lakewood related to the transfer of old Seddler Cemetery property.
Mr. Anderson?
Based on my full-time position in the office of the Pierce County Executive, I'm going to recuse myself from participating in this motion.
Very good. And for an overview on this, shall we say, grave situation, we have our city attorney, Heidi Anne Walker.
Thank you. Mayor Wayland, Deputy Mayor Moss, members of the council. I think this one's pretty self-explanatory. I looked at a map of where it is. It's kind of this little donut hole on one of our main arterials, and our opportunity to take care of it so that it appears consistent with the rest of our city is the motivation here. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Do we have historical records that will help if anyone say they want to come and learn about those who may be buried there? I know at Western State, they're really working grave concerns, is working on identifying and categorizing or cataloging, shall we say, those who have departed and names with markers.
The closest I came to that discussion was a discussion about whether anybody still has reserved spots, because some family tradition is to do something like that, and I don't think there's anything still active there. But I can ask about any records that they may have.
From a historical perspective, at some point, either us or the Lakewood Historical Museum or the Fort Silicon historical folks, they certainly might like to have the information.
We can certainly make an inquiry.
Very good. Do I have a motion? Any other questions of Ms. Walker, Mr. Bokey? Did you have a question?
What's our plan for the property? To maintain it, I think, but Ms. Dodsworth may have. Mow it more often than the county does, or, I mean, what's the value proposition here?
Well, I think what we want to do is to be able to capture the information, as Mayor Wayland suggested, as well as manage the site. And initially, the idea was is to spruce it up a bit, have more eyes on it on a regular basis, and kind of respect the space that it is. You know, we spend a lot of time, and we're very fortunate to have a volunteer group that helps us over at Fort Silicon Park with the patient cemetery there. So the idea is to take a look at the site, and there's already some folks that are interested in helping us. They're mostly interested in helping us because the site itself is known as a very pristine native plant area. There are species in there that we just don't see everywhere because of the prairie-ness that it was, besides the development around it. So I think our idea would be to gather more information on the site, do some kind of a stewardship plan so that we really know what's there. You don't want to, like we talked about CAMIS earlier this week, we don't want to just mow things over and make it look all tidy like a golf course when it really isn't the nature of that site. So we're going to do, we'll come forward with a way to do a stewardship plan, find some volunteer organizations that might want to help us. And again, there's folks that have come forward because they're excited about someone keeping an eye on that property on a regular basis. And also provide some interpretive information and some things so that it can be a site that people, when they visit, they learn something, they grow to love the site, and then, of course, can provide future stewardship for it.
Great. Mr. Branstadter?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. So Ms. Dodsworth, would the way forward in terms of looking at it be that we would be developing a master plan similar to the one we have for some of our smaller parks? Using that sort of a process? Or is, and then integrating it into the legacy plan? Or is this going to be unique?
It definitely will get integrated into the legacy plan at the next update. And if there's any code changes based on ownership, which I don't think there are, we'll check with community development on that. We wouldn't do a traditional type of master plan for that site, as in bringing a We wouldn't do a traditional type of master plan for that site, as in bringing all the neighbors in, talk about what we might want to do with it. But we'll bring the right people together to make a plan so that if there are any enhancements, they're done properly and in the right location and then respecting, um, the nature of the site, which it is a cemetery. So, um, so some planning, but it's not gonna, we're not gonna turn it into a neighborhood site that people are gonna come in and have picnics and, you know. But maybe wildflower viewing or interpretive, you know, I don't know yet, but some type of a master plan, but different than what we've typically done in the past.
It's more focused on conserving the 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 site, both for its ecological significance and the respect for this type of site that it is, rather than having any intent to deal with with recreating it.
Correct.
And and I and I guess that, um, to go with Councilmember Bokey's statement about, uh, well, are we just gonna mow it more and more freely? Is is that's still the that's still to be determined exactly. Um, what what sort of manicuring will be will be done that's consistent with both the conservation and respect.
Right. And and removing invasive plants. Right now, that's probably the biggest thing is to remove the invasive plant so we don't, um, negatively affect the the native plants that are there.
Okay. And then one last question is, is that there's sort of an ongoing project regarding signs? Is this a site that will then get a new sign once the design for new signs are started?
You know, it's it's not on our list, so that would be something we'd have to consider, but there is signage there now. I mean, it's historic. So I appreciate your, uh, levity there. There is, it's not on our sign list, so to speak, but that could that could mean that we could add it. But I was talking more signage as interpretive signage so that people know what it is. You know, some people drive by it and might not realize that that it's a patient or that's a historic old settler cemetery. And what does that mean? What's the era? What's the, um, so we just want to find out more and then again, share that with our community so that people will take care of it properly.
Yeah, I do know that the site is already has a a marker from the Historical Society and an Eagle Scout project that provided some information about, who is buried there and with with some names to be able to go and do that, although it's been there for quite a while and it's need maybe needs to be
Yeah.
upgraded. All right. Well, thank you. I I I think, uh, you know, we are in a position to be good stewards of something that is a part of our community's history. And I'm glad to see that we're, um, getting it, and it does seem like the price is right.
Any other? Councilmember Laura Sella?
Thank you, Mayor Whelan. I just had a quick question. So, uh, this property, along with the one at Fort Silicon Park, are those the potentially the only two cemeteries in possession by the city, or are there others?
Those are the only two that the city manages, correct?
Thank you.
Owns and manages.
Right.
The others are privately owned.
Correct.
Thank you.
So you're working on non-native species eradication, that kind of thing? So I know you're removing hemlock at the dog park, so I hope you do that before it's too late here.
We remove hemlock from all of our parks in various spaces. Some just gets a little more attention than the other spaces.
Very good. I need a motion to adopt ordinance number, excuse me, motion number twenty twenty three dash five four. Been moved by Deputy Mayor Moss, seconded by Councilmember Laura Sella that we adopt motion twenty twenty three dash fifty four. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion twenty twenty three dash five four has been adopted. We now turn to, that ends, of course, our regular agenda. We now turn to reports by the city manager, Mr. Coffield.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Um, first off, I'd like to turn it over to Partners for Parks. Understand they have both, uh, an update for you as it relates to their capital campaign as well as an ask for you. So with that, I will turn it over to Partners for Parks.
Come on up.
I'll just get them started. Uh, good evening, Mayor, uh, Whelan and Deputy Mayor Moss, who stepped away and council members. As you know, I'm Mary Dodsworth, and I am not only your Parks Recreation and Community Services Director, but I also am a member of the Partners for Parks Board. Um, but I'd like to, uh, you know, city has a long history of partnering, collaboration is one of our our key, um, benefits that we do in our community. And so Dave Betts is gonna start off. He is the chair of our barn project. And we also have Sally Saunders, who's the president of Partners for Parks. We have Hallie McCurdy, who's also on the board, and Al Hove, who is, um, a member of our campaign council. And so Dave, why don't you take it away with, um, the update on Partners for Parks and the barn project?
Good evening, and thank you for the council members and the mayor for giving us a little time to tell you what's we're what's going on. As you probably have heard, we have, uh, already raised one million, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars towards towards our goal of, uh, of our portion is three point seven five million. The purpose of my, uh, talk tonight is basically a request to update the city's naming policy to accommodate a project of this magnitude. Prior to this, uh, I was, uh, chairman of the playground and bought and bought a treehouse, et cetera, and was obviously I was, it was noted on the plaques, et cetera, that a private citizen donated enough money to get this project started, et cetera, et cetera. I'm from Pittsburgh originally, and, uh, Pittsburgh was a steel town. And everything in that town was was, uh, donated by one of the steel barons. Carnegie Museum, Carnegie Library, Shenley Park, Frick Park. These were all the captains of industry that, uh, went approached and, uh, looked at things and said, I can make this city better. Well, the project that we are talking about is the H Barn renovation. And in that renovation, there is a love affair by some, uh, of the silos. And they've always never wanted anybody to touch them or break them or anything else. And we want to tap into that love affair by giving an opport, the individuals, including foundations, the opportunity, if they want, to, uh, have one of the sections of the H Barn project named after their family or a loved one or someone who has passed on. And this is, I would think, uh, you would have to agree that probably ninety-five percent of the cities in the United States uh, make use of this. And certainly I've raised money in Lakewood enough to know that people, many people are, they want to give money, but they would love to be noted for it. And, uh, I can't comment on that, but that's the way we raise money here in this public uh, private partnership. The names family has donated one million dollars and, uh, knowing the name, uh, Mr. Names, they have so many things named after them that they've kind of run out of interest in this. But there are many people that we have not talked to yet that would express an interest, uh, to leave a legacy. Many of these people have lived their entire life in Lakewood. Uh, they've raised their kids here. They played, their kids have played soccer, and they have an affinity to the, uh, park itself. One quick thing is that when we built the playground, it was a community build. We had twenty eight hundred Lakewood volunteers from all over, and I have not seen a lot of them since. But they participated in the building of that playground. And if you talk to your maintenance people over there, there has been little or no vandalism. The people have pride in it. They've invested in it, and they want it kept like it is. And this is the purpose of, uh, of my very short presentation today. We have silos, we have crude prep areas, we have, uh, event centers, workshops, and, uh, to accommodate the young and the old community members here in Lakewood. But we want to give them an opportunity, if they so desire, to donate a million dollars and say, I I would like this section named after my family or my daughter that passed away or whatever. We are giving them the opportunity, and we are not doing this, uh, in a cavalier manner. What we would like to do is have the city council review a request for a naming situation and either vote up or down. But I think it's a, uh, of those people I see here that have raised money know that the naming opportunities are key to any sizable gift. And I have many friends who have, uh, have, uh, donated sections of hospitals, provided they have their name on it. And, uh, I think this is an excellent opportunity for the city council simply to update their their, let's see, parameters under which we can operate. I appreciate your time. Do you have any questions?
Is there a Betts family silo in the offing, Dave?
Yeah, pardon me. Yeah, that's right.
I I just wanted to add to that. We're not talking about this huge sign, you know, as you walk into this room and you see, you know, that hits you in the face. And we're not talking about naming the whole barn after anybody, but because there's different rooms in there, the ability to put some kind of a token that recognizes their generosity.
And you'll note that Clover, uh, Clover Park Boatech, that is the way they raise their money. I think, uh, I have a room there. I've never seen it. Exactly. Okay. But thank you very much for your attention, and
Thank you.
Uh, we want to jump on this, obviously. You know, we have to, uh, we have to be fish when the fisher bite.
Excellent.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then just a quick question, Mr. Coffield. I believe we saw a draft or at least a proposed update, or maybe I was misreading something.
Um, well, I was gonna bring this up, um, to my report, but certainly if the council would like to move forward with acquiesce into this request, what we can do is we can formulate a policy position outlining that and memorializing that, and we can bring that back for your review and consideration. I just need a nod from the council on that.
I think we're good. Mr. Branstad has a question, and Mr. Anderson does as well.
Yeah, I I I guess I just want to make sure that I understand that unless we modify the existing naming policy, is Partners for Parks concerned that they won't be able to meet their fundraising goal?
I I believe Partners for Parks is looking for another tool in their toolbox. And when you updated the resolution, the most current resolution on our naming policy, you did build in some flexibility so that we didn't have to come every time someone wanted to donate a bench or every time someone wanted to help us build a playground. So you you do have flexibility built into that policy currently. So I'm not sure we need to technically update the policy, but we would want to get concurrence from council that you are approving of their ability to, um, encourage individuals in our community to donate towards this project, which eventually is the city of Lakewood's barn and city of Lakewood project, so that you could you could recognize individuals for that contribution. And again, it could be a little plaque by a door, similar to you see at a Boys and Girls Club, or it could be, uh, some public art or an honor wall, you know, like we did the bricks in front of the plaza at the pavilion. It could be something similar to that to honor those folks who have contributed in in a substantial way.
Well, I guess I, Ms. Mayor, I'd be willing to sort of take a look at the current policy with the and have some discussion about what does naming actually mean? Again, in other words, uh, recognizing a donation with a plaque or something is 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 one thing where the naming isn't of an of a of an advertising type purpose, okay, which is really what our policy is somewhat looking at, or if it's and but but if it's not a major thing of where we're trying to to, uh, a recognition of a of an individual and perhaps a memorialization of a of 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 an individual that has passed on. Um, I I I am a little concerned about making sure that we provide Partners for Parks clarity about what they can they commit to to a potential donor uh, other than that the request would be sent sent through us if 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 naming is the is 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 what they want. Uh, acknowledging the donation is different than naming, in my view. But I think we maybe need to, as the city manager brings us something back of looking how, what's the nuance of that? Um, being able to go and do that, um, before Partners for Parks is placed in a situation of telling folks something that maybe we're not going to follow through with. And if we can be clear with them, then they they can move forward with some clarity themselves.
Very good, Mr. Anderson.
Well, I agree with Mr. Betts. I've been involved in enough fundraising that, uh, my name's under the names on something up at Billerman, uh, that was early in their donations. They went scaled way up, and now they don't even ask. Uh, I've been involved in fundraising where we've been the beneficiaries, but there are there are many, uh, that are interested in that. I think it's a great fundraising tool. I think we should move forward and uh, give them some clarity. The clarity I would give Partners for Parks is if they charge enough money and people clear the background check through us endorsing it, which is what was suggested, uh, that they get to name it. Maybe you can limit it for a number of years. Remember back and we just celebrated or we're celebrating the, uh, uh, fortieth anniversary, that's scary, of the Tacoma Dome. In the Tacoma Dome, kind of like most government projects, kind of ran out of money. It was totally spent by the time they got there. They had to put in cheap proceeds and have a sign on the freeway. And, uh, I was participated in drafting the contract that put a sign out front. And for twenty five years, huge sound national bank, and then its predecessor, Key Bank, had their name flashed up there on that sign on the freeway. Uh, and when I went by, I was always reminded, geez, still going, but it isn't anymore. And so that's another thing to consider. You might, if if there's some overriding naming right uh, to, uh, limit it, I wouldn't suggest that it be as, uh, frequent turnover as the Seattle stadiums, uh, but, uh, at least you might some finality in it. It's for X number of years, and we have a good example of, uh, donor recognition in that regard here in Lakewood. Harry Todd Park. Who is Harry Todd? This guy that gave the land. Any other questions, comments? It sounds like we've got consensus. I'm looking to my left and my right. Looks like we've got consensus to bring it back. You know, I too, uh, would agree to ensure that sufficient tools are in the toolbox. In my humble opinion, it's keeping an eye on the prize. The prize is to get this facility up and done and available for the community to enjoy. And if it takes providing some naming rights for sections of the facility, because it's still gonna be the H Barn or whatever, you know, that that nomenclature may end up being at Fort Silicon Park, but it could be the Dodsworth Memorial Cafe or whatever.
Door knob.
Yeah. Yeah, doorknob, exactly.
Yeah, I just wanna
That's right, no memorial. Yeah, exactly.
I just I just want to emphasize that as we, as they wrote, or I might have put in my staff report, but they also wrote is is that, um, we're gonna be watching it the whole way, and we'll be bringing it to council for, um, we'll bring some detail, but council will be able to approve everything before anything gets etched on a stone or written on a plaque. So council will have that approval at the end, but they just want to be able to move forward with having that as a tool. So we appreciate that.
You look at how the museums have done it downtown. They've all done it that way. The Glass Museum, the Art Museum, the History Museum, the Car Museum. It's the only way they got done. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That'll be a good-looking silo with your name on it, Mr. Betts. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, very good. So next, Mr. Coffield, it looks like we're going to review the opioid abatement council formation documentation with Ms. Walker.
That's correct. The city attorney will walk you through this.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council, Heidi Walker, City Attorney. And as you can imagine, when the requirement is that every jurisdiction sign off on the same agreement, it takes a little bit of time. So this is a preview. It is not necessarily set in stone yet. We are set to meet again in the coming week or so with an eye towards timely executing something. I have informed the partners that are getting together who have to sign this agreement that Lakewood is marching on. And the reason that I've been doing that is so that they understand that they too need to march on, because ultimately, we all have to enter into this agreement. Our position on it, and it's explained in the agenda bill and the proposed agreement, is that this needs to be a bare bones legal compliance tool that meets the bare minimum to get the funding. And what I would say to you about that is that allows us to do our own thing to the degree that we want to with the disbursements, or if we want to get together with other cities and do something more regionally, we can do it. But we're not bound by anything in this agreement. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Anderson, and then Ms. Walker, or Mr. Brandstetter, excuse me.
So what are the proposals or objections of the holdouts to that position?
Sometimes it has to do with just being able to have the right people in the room at your home city to say that they're okay with it. There are others who, just as recently as today, I was hearing from some of the smaller cities about the idea of a quorum. We originally wanted to redefine quorum, because there are some cities that are getting so little that this just isn't worth their time necessarily. But there are others who said they want quorum to mean what it always means, which is the majority of all of the members. So, but that's not of consequence to me for purposes of debating with them. I'm waiting that one out. The only time I have jumped in is if they start talking about the OAC telling us what to do with the disbursement, or putting any conditions on it. That's pretty much where I've been with it. If the council feels that that's a little too light of a touch, I'd be happy to get more vocal. You know, I can go there.
Mr. Brandstetter.
And I certainly appreciate the fact that we're moving to where we don't have another layer of approval, or a layer of direction of how to use funds to be able to go and do that. But in your memo, there is this sentence that says that the OAC shall conduct an audit of expenditures from each jurisdiction to ensure that expenditures are consistent with the purpose of the one MOU. How would that work if they determined that an expenditure is not consistent?
Well, Councilmember Brandstetter, that's a good question, and that would remain to be seen. They can't tell us what to do with the money, but if afterwards we say we went to an important conference in Hawaii for three weeks with the money to study, you know, opioid impacts on warmer climates, I think they would say something about it, and I'm not sure what they could do other than to perhaps censure us, tell us not to do it again. They can't control what disbursements come to us. The disbursements continue to come directly to the city. Perhaps they would report us up the line to the people who are making the disbursements, and at that point, the people who are making the disbursements would choose to not give us a disbursement or put us on probation of some sort, but that is not detailed anywhere. I think the important thing for member cities is that there's not a gate that we have to go through in order to get the disbursement, and that we are being trusted to show our methodology and will be audited for compliance, but that they are respecting each jurisdiction's particular needs. Some jurisdictions are going to be looking at Narcan based on the amount of money. Other jurisdictions may want to look at something larger scale. It's just going to vary from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. They're trusting us to understand what the real impact has been in our community.
Okay, and then the list of jurisdictions that will it seems that each jurisdiction would appoint one member.
Correct.
And so, and when the OAC meets and conceivably votes on something, there's not an intent for there to be votes to be weighted, like a Tacoma vote counts more than a Lakewood vote.
That's correct. Every vote is equal in this agreement.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Boki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. So let's try to get on the, I'm just trying to get everybody on the same page here. There are a number of opioid settlements that we're expecting over time. Some money has already arrived.
Correct.
But the first tranche, we'll call it, was actually they, whatever groups or groups settled.
Correct. It was the three distributor groups.
The three distributor groups, and they agreed to pay out over a number of years.
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years. So we'll be receiving, and are you assuming, or do we know if the other settlements will be the same way? Will they be lump sums, or are we still expecting these 18-year payouts, or?
There's a second group that includes Walgreens and CVS. It's a pharmacy set that I believe will come in in a very similar way. And I mentioned this a time or two. When this litigation started spreading across the country, all of the cases, it's a huge class action, were funneled into one particular federal judge in Ohio, who is sort of renowned for taking the chaos of this size of litigation, and really kind of pushing it through to settlement. And I believe prognosis, I believe that you will see this pattern repeat itself, because what it's allowing the defendants to do is to say, I've checked the box. So for example, that first group, the distributors, they're saying, we took care of Washington. They have one Washington MOU. They're in little divisions. We send the distributions as we promised to, and I don't want to hear from another place in Washington. They're doing the same thing with every state across the country. So that allows them to be fully finally done with it once it's gone through. I believe that that model is appealing when you're dealing with the kind of scope of a piece of litigation of this size. So I don't think it's beyond realistic expectations to say the others will sort of funnel themselves the same way. I can't guarantee it, but it wouldn't surprise me.
So the formula on how many dollars we received, that's agreed to at that level, not at the state level?
It hasn't been settled with all of the defendants yet. But the defendants to date have agreed to the formula, and you may remember that first settlement, Washington was the holdout. Washington was going to litigate until the cows came home, and then ultimately settled for what I believe is about the same as everyone else got earlier. But there was a formula that applied, and it had to do with like per capita impact as calculated, and that's a huge benefit to those who are receiving the funds, because without that formula, we would be asked to come up with the impact on our community. And particularly for the City of Lakewood and other cities like us where we're not completely full service, you know it's impacting, for example, fire departments. So you have to round up all of the other agencies that are being impacted and figure out what the true impact to your community is. The formula is very beneficial because of its simplicity.
What are the allowable uses?
The allowable uses are detailed in the one Washington MOU. It's about three or four pages long, and I can bring it the next time I brief you when we're finalizing the agreement. But they're in sections. There's a section that includes things like Narcan, like on-the-scene response kinds of things. There's a section that applies to treatment that could be made available for people. There's a section that's education and training. And what I would tell you is that in my review of it, it appears very broad. You're not just going to want to give a vague statement about what you're doing. You're going to want to be specific. But if it's specifically targeted to impact the opioid effects in our community, it's probably somewhere on that list. But I'll bring that back since you're asking.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Well, thank you for the overview. I assume the action animal will come to us at some future date.
It will, and it should look substantially like this. There may be a few tweaks, but it should look a lot like this one.
Very good. Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Coffield?
Just a few updates.
Okay.
The first is, just wanted to recognize the fishing event at Harry Todd Park on Saturday. I understand that we received an incredible amount of positive feedback from the community and from families who attended that event. Of course, it was a wonderful weather day as well. And I want to recognize, you know, these types of events that the city puts on, they just don't happen by accident. Takes a tremendous amount of coordination and effort and planning by our Parks Recreation and Community Services Department. And I specifically want to recognize Cameron Fairfield, one of our recreation coordinators, and of course, the leadership of our Parks and Rec Director, Mary Dodsworth, for helping facilitate this. But in the end, it's not a fun event unless the community comes out, and so they really get all the credit for really, a really successful event. And our communications manager, she pulled a, pulled a post from one of our social media accounts that kind of sums it up, which is, quote, "The event was so much fun, well organized, and so generous. Proud to live in Lakewood," unquote. So just wanted to pass that on, and again, you know, the various events that the city sponsors is being very well received by those that we serve. You know, now that the session has, the legislative session has closed, there's been, you know, we're there's a bunch of bills that we're going to have to now move forward and make some changes to our own codes. One of them is evaluating the impact of House Bill 1110, which mandates imposing greater housing densities for all cities and towns in Washington State. And for Lakewood, as I've reported previously, what that means is that each residential property is going to be mandated to allow up to two accessory dwelling units on each single-family residential property, and two units on every single-family, single-family residential property, as well as four units on every lot within one-quarter mile walking distance of a commuter or BRT station, though that latter item has already been addressed as part of one of our subarea plans here in the city. And to address that, we have initiated a review of our code and our process to identify some amendments to, you know, help address that, at the same time, protect our community as well. That is going to take a little bit of work. It's going to, a couple of areas that we're looking at is Title 12, which is our site development code, as well as our zoning code and ATNA, specifically our design standards. So wanted to let you know that we have initiated that review. A recommendation would be that that should be rolled in as part of the update to your 2024 major comp plan amendments, and have that as the zoning code update. So just wanted to give you a heads up that that's something that we're looking at.
Just a point on that, if I may.
Sure.
So thank you for doing that. One of the questions I get a lot from folks in town is how does that eradicate local control over setbacks? So if you're going to throw two houses and two ADUs on a single-family residential lot, what are we doing with the city's ability?
So that's what we're going to have to be looking at, Mayor. That's exactly right. So, and, and here's the deal. Perhaps, you know, the setbacks, or you, you know, right now, for example, we don't mandate as a condition of development, frontage improvements, curbs, gutters, sidewalks.
Right.
Well.
Maybe we do.
Maybe you do. And then that further, you know, limits what can be built on those properties, so that you don't get that increased density, which is going to create, in my opinion, all kinds of challenges and problems in many of our single-family residential neighborhoods. But the issue of setbacks, the issue, you know, the other thing is trees, tree preservation.
Right.
Is, you know, what takes precedence? And you know what we've been told? Not trees.
Right, exactly.
That's what we have been told.
Right, I get it.
I don't agree with that, and
Where you get all the two-by-fours, you know, to build this increased density, by the way.
But that's why we want to go through this process, Mayor, and bring you back something that is, you know, concrete, and really addresses the Lakewood community.
Right.
And what's in our best interest.
Well, I appreciate that. And the other question is maybe interfacing, since we're not a full-service city, interfacing with the folks at Pierce County Sewer Lakewood Water, what requirements are you going to have?
Well.
To enhance the hookups and everything else for these different utilities. It's interesting.
So that transitions into another bill that the state legislature just passed, which is Senate Bill 5920, which mandates certain permit timelines. And, you know, that's all well and good. So here's the good news. The good news is that, well, first of all, the effective date is January 1, 2025, so we have some time to address this. The good news, however, is that our current code, as it is, already meets many of those new state requirements. So we've already, we're out ahead of people. We're out ahead of the state, the state on this. But the challenge is, and you just hit the nail on the head there, is that we are not a full-service city. So we don't have control over the sewer utility, the water utility, the fire district, and quite frankly, the list goes on. And guess what? We're not the only city in that situation. And I would define this bill as one of, that's going to result in all kinds of unintended consequences, because again, we're not the controlling party. And so that's something that's going to have to be addressed as well. And so in 2024, this is something that we're going to have to take a look at. And I'm sure between now and then, in the next six to 12 months, some more information is going to come out about this as cities take a closer look at it. But certainly, as it stands right now, it is likely that additional staff resources are going to be needed to just implement this state mandate, which again, you know, not just the City of Lakewood, but many cities opposed. But again, the state legislature has taken it upon themselves to force cities and towns to do this.
Mr. Anderson.
We've mentioned three of the five that I had down frontage improvement trees and setbacks. Also, we need to look at our height restrictions.
Sure.
And particularly because of all our waterways, lakes, we need to look at impervious surface.
Shoreline is actually going to be a huge one, Councilmember. Absolutely, that's on our list as well. And I don't know if you said it, but also, you know, design, design standards for single-family residential properties. The other is a more immediate need, and it relates to House Bill 1220, which was passed by the state legislature a couple of years ago relating to emergency housing, emergency shelter, transitional housing, impermanent supportive housing. That's going to be coming forward as part, actually, that your planning commission is in the process of finalizing a recommendation on that as part of the 2023 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. And once the city council has an opportunity to consider and, you know, take action on those amendments, we would like to bring back to you some recommended zoning code updates as it relates to your rental housing safety program. There are some very minor cleanup amendments that need to be done, but more importantly, including those amendments into your rental housing safety program to further strengthen that program so that folks who are living in these facilities, again, emergency housing, shelters, transitional housing, and impermanent supportive housing are living in safe and secure environments as well. So you can look for that, you know, later, later this fall and into early next year as a follow-up to the 2023 comp plan amendment process. Also, our Public Works Engineering Department, I think as I reported previously, is partnering with Puget Sound Energy, or maybe vice versa, but we're working with each other on developing a street light dimming pilot program here in the city. And PSE has been very gracious with their time and resources. And so they have identified a small-service subarea due east of Fort Stilliken Park, actually includes a part of the park, to undertake this. And, you know, first and foremost, we want to notify the residents of what we're doing. But basically, you know, run a program where the lights between 10:00 PM and 6:00 PM for one week will be at a 70% luminosity, then at a luminosity, rather, and then 50% for one week, and just see how things are and evaluate, and also provide an opportunity for folks that live in that area to provide feedback and things along those lines, and see, and see if it's something that's worth pursuing in other areas as well. And then the other part of that is, does that result in any types of, you know, cost savings, which would just be simply an added benefit? Really, the goal here is energy savings and balancing that with, you know, community safety as well. And I believe we are the first city, and the state are certainly within Puget Sound Energy Service Area to be undertaking this. So, so more to follow on that. Last Thursday, SSMCP had their Elected Officials Council event, and one of the attendees is a member of the Board of the Buffalo Soldiers Museum, which is based in Tacoma, and I believe I might have put in on your diocesan, or rather, the city clerk did a document outlining an event. an event that they are going to be putting on on September 4th, the Cheney Stadium, Cheney Stadium, and it's honoring our military labor force. And, you know, certainly, if you haven't been over to this museum or seen them out and about at various military events, they're just a great organization. And I think one of the board members was expected to come to your meeting here tonight to request the city council to help sponsor that. So she didn't. I'm just going to do it on her behalf, since I told her I would. And basically, they're looking for a sponsorship from either $1,000, $2,500, or $10,000 to help sponsor this event. I think being a military community, my recommendation would be for this body to do that. My recommendation would further suggest that you use some ARPA funds to do this, and either $1,000 or $2,500, I think, would be certainly more than appropriate. So, Mayor, I'll leave that with you, if that's something that you wish to undertake. And again, they're very, very active and supportive of, you know, the city of Lakewood and our endeavors in supporting our service members and their families as well. And then lastly, on your calendar, on really the next major event is on May 20th, Clover Park Technical College Foundation is having their scholarship celebration dinner event. I know in the past that had been a, had been a lunch event. And that's going to be at 5:00 PM at the McGavick Conference Center. I know I sent you a link if you wish to attend that. Good cause, they raise money to help students and provide scholarships to those and to those in need. And then, I think, a week from Thursday, May 20, no, a week from Wednesday, May 24th, is the Clover Park High School is having their annual Arlington Project, which is a great project. I was talking to the school superintendent late last week, and they're getting ready to roll that out again. So of course, all of you are invited to that. So with that, that's my report.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Caulfield? Well, great. Then I'm going to turn to council comments, and I'm going to shake it up. I'm going to start this time. And lead off, so it might prompt some discussion. I'm going to first report on our trip to Gimhei City just briefly and let the others chime in. So this was a, an invitation for us to attend a Gaia Culture Festival with our sister city Gimhei, the city of Gimhei. And the Deputy Mayor, Councilmember Bokey, City Manager, and our Communications Director Bryn Grimley went on this trip. It was, in one word, fabulous. The hospitality was truly amazing, over the top. They were incredibly gracious and met us every step of the way with a positive attitude and a willing nature to educate us about really the wonderful culture and history that they have in their city. And we had the opportunity to see a really interesting public safety facility where they showed us how they are embracing the use of technology with about 6,000 closed-circuit television cameras throughout the city, backed up by a interior room at their public safety building filled with monitors and folks that monitor the monitors to ensure that police presence and responsiveness takes place in an expeditious fashion when they see knucklehead activity out on the streets with their closed-circuit TV camera facilities. So it was fascinating. Now, you know, you learn best practices, and that would be one of the takeaways as people ask, gee, what did you get out of that trip? Well, I learned some really great best practices from a city that is our sister city and doing amazing things. The other opportunity we observed was that with regard to literacy efforts. They pride themselves on being Gimhei City, a city that reads. And we went to a couple of libraries, and one would think, you know, notwithstanding the fact that we don't have one currently, but one would think that, you know, libraries are supposed to be shush, you know, quiet places for people to study, and not so. This place was vibrant, full of children and their families, reading, doing activities. It was a beautiful reclaimed facility. It was an old school building, gymnasium. It was just absolutely fabulous. And we saw a second facility and received a tour from, I think, the Director of Library Services for Gimhei City, and she was incredible, talking about the focus in these different neighborhood districts to making sure that there's a micro library, for lack of a better term, in just about every geographic area in the city to serve the residents. And, you know, I was incredibly impressed, notwithstanding the fact they have great national pride for their history, their culture, they've got museums to support it. You talk about tree canopy, the place is gorgeous. There's certainly a lot of rain, and we were there to feed the trees. But it was a wonderful opportunity to meet with incredibly diligent forward-thinking public servants, and that is a great thing to receive back to our city best practices and appreciation for culture. We do have a large Korean population here, both individuals that are residents and business owners. It enhances that appreciation for all that those folks do in our community as well. So for me, it was a great takeaway trip, and I'll let the others speak to that as well. I want to talk about a couple of things on public comment tonight. You know, normally, we don't often get public comment that's as constructive as we would perhaps hope. And I thought tonight we received some very constructive public comments. The first, I just want to raise the issue of Daisy Harden. Here is a well-meaning resident who comes asking for our help with regard to open public drug use. It's impacting her quality of life and that of her children and certainly of her neighbors. This is an opportunity for us to utilize the ordinance we just passed that should be now in effect that bans, or at least criminalizes, open public drug use for this exact reason. It's not appropriate around families with children and people trying to live their lives. And I would hope that we can do a little bit of emphasis patrol out there. She's given us the address, we know the apartment complex, and if need be, maybe we have a little residential housing safety program visit, because it is all part of public health and safety. And I think, you know, I agree with Daisy that we shouldn't put up with it as a community, and I hope we can get out there and help. Mr. Schmodder came at my suggestion, which was, you know, a good suggestion. And it brings up an issue. We've talked over the years about what's going on with Clover Creek, but we really haven't had a good sum on it as an organization, and it might be a good starting point. We've talked about what might we have on an agenda item with the Lakewood Water District. This might be a good item to put on the agenda. And if the result of that agenda discussion includes a joint review or an update or request update, the 2005 groundwater study conducted by the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department might not be a bad outcome. But for the many residents who do live around Lake Silicon, it is a gem for the city, certainly. We're talking about improving Edgewater Park, which provides more public access. That lake is fed principally by the creeks, including Clover Creek. And with the watershed being as it is, it's demonstrably losing volume, and it would probably be a worthwhile endeavor to take a look at that with the Lakewood Water District. Third item on public comment that I thought was not a bad comment was that dealing with where are we with the school district? Certainly, we kind of take a bit of a hands-off approach. But on review, one wonders whether or not we do have a role to play, because it's a report card to the taxpayers in a sense. And, you know, we take pride in the things we do well, and we certainly put attention on the things that we need to do better. And it seems to me as a community, we got to figure out, and maybe this is another agenda item for our joint meeting with the school district, is to say, how can we help? You know, how do we define the problem? What is the challenge? How can we do a better job of getting to yes on improving test scores, not just for the students, certainly, and their families, certainly, and their futures, but for the community as a whole? And certainly for the taxpayers to get a return on their consistent investment. You know, as a body we stood behind, I don't think we did an official proclamation or resolution, but certainly many of us individually in the business community stood behind the district to make the bond happen that resulted in the new schools and the establishment of Harrison Prep. That wouldn't have happened had the community got behind the school district for that bond. And I think we similarly need to get behind them and figure out how we can improve the performance of the district and its students for the betterment of all residents, taxpayers, and property owners. Those are my comments on public comment. I will attend the Clover Park Community Foundation or Clover Park Technical College Foundation dinner event. Apparently, I'm the keynote speaker. I better come up with something to say before Saturday, especially if you attend. So I look forward to that event. And then finally, on Mr. Caulfield's request or suggestion that we embrace the request for support for the Buffalo Soldiers, and I think it's their museum requesting it for, I would support that at whatever level between 1,000 and 2,500 that the council would like to do by consensus. So as we go around the room with your comments, that's the reason I led tonight. Let's get some consensus for the city manager. So, Mr. Bryn Stetter, you're next.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did get yeah, I appreciate your comments, because I thought there was a fairly both in terms of range of topics and relevance, a good set of public comments today to be able to go and do that. And I particularly the issue about we have a new ordinance on open public use and we'll have one that'll be effective in about five weeks on possession, or it can't really be effective until one July, I guess, because there's still a state law that goes into that to do that. But I think that on that topic is that we kind of want to stay in a position of where we can make a difference in different locations and for folks in the community like the lady that came and spoke to us today and others that have communicated to us from both the residential and the business community to be able to go and do that. And so I think that it is important that we, and perhaps you, Mr. Mayor, that we start to communicate with the legislators that we have so that in their special session, they don't undo what we've worked to put in place. I'm almost at the point of where I think it would be best if they did nothing. And then, and then, and then, and then and then take a year and see how all the different cities and that have gone on as opposed to replacing all of these ordinances but adding get-out-of-jail-free cards to all the, all the conditions around the drug use and possession to be able to go and do that. But I think we need to be proactive in terms of of if it's, if it isn't just like we are that, that, quite honestly, I think we're in a position of of the legislature doing nothing. It'd be okay, rather than going through them, going through a whole lot of compromises to do that. But we need to take a possession to look to do that. I think the, you know, you know, we we heard comments tonight about about trees and people are always it's, it's, it's a more impactful vision with a large tree comes down than than a grove of smaller trees being planted. But it speaks to the fact that we're in the formative period of time for an urban forestry program that I think it speaks to being able to go and do that. I know in the city managers updates to us he spoke about how we purchased a good number of Gary Oak young trees to replace some that are being torn down to make way for the trail and roadway improvements over at Fort Silicon Park. I think we need to be sure that we publicize that, but we also need to make sure we don't lose momentum on having an urban forestry program, because it's a, it's not, you don't increase the canopy just by planting more trees. You, there's always going to be the some trees come down and other trees get planted and existing trees grow. And that's how your canopy gets done to be able to move forward in doing that. And so I think we're looking at that. But a number of the comments today directly relate to to our vision statement. And our vision statement is, quite frankly, we're it's only got a couple of years to run before we're hoping to agree to that. And there are there is, and we maybe need to get started soon on just evaluating is how close are we to achieving that vision, or have we? And the the status of our schools is one of the things that's in in that vision. And we get we get, we can get euphoric about how well we're doing at the post-secondary level. But that I don't know that we have the same perception at the K-12 level, although I think that we also perhaps are doing better at the K-12 level than than some of the rhetoric is, but we are at a place where there's room for improvement. I mean, I do hear from realtors all the time. As was mentioned by Mr. Hagen tonight, he said 40 years ago, people were making decisions about where to buy homes and where, where rent, you know, based on what they could read and they could find out about schools, and that's and that's, that's still the case today. That's an important decision monitor that people have. But I I'm glad you all had a good, you all had a good time in Gimhei. That the, I would say that the Shape Executive Committee met got much the same sort of information that we received from the city manager about all the bills that are going to impact housing and how they're going to move forward with doing that. And the, they were, there was some acknowledgement about when the original formative document was there, there was a need to make sure that all the jurisdictions felt that they were getting their money's worth out of, out of it. You know, we talked about that ourselves as we became the first jurisdiction to approve it. We also said we want to make sure that there are some outcomes and then and then this was moving forward to do that. My my perception is that, is that it is, but that they need to make the effort to just not allow all cities to assume that, and they ought to put that together. And I think the the executive director plans to meet individually with the executive committee members, Mr. Bokey, about putting together a budget and then selling a budget to, to all the jurisdictions so they can move forward to get done. And I'm so I'm actually you know, pretty positive that most of the comments that we heard about were areas that we should consider, but that I don't, but that I think were actually doing well or certainly have the right intentions on behalf of the community. Well, thank you.
Thoughts on the Buffalo Soldier request?
I'd support a request at $2,500. And I seem to recall that they annually do an event of this sort, although they're not always, it's not always at Cheney Stadium. It's somewhere, but, you know, like we like our, and supportive of our history with JBLM, you know, they, they have a broader vision of the history of the military that and that actually has some connectivity to us. And they're a good partner.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome back. Thank you for, it sounds like you guys had a great time, so I look forward to hearing more about that. I am definitely in support of the Buffalo Soldier event. Um, I am definitely in support of the Buffalo Soldier event. Um, actually, my husband and my daughter went to the museum in Tacoma a couple, like about a month or so ago and said it was really cool. So I was working, they were spring break. And then I just wanted to also just say that I'm really looking forward to the things that are coming up within the city. The Street Festival on June third and then the farmer's market that is getting ready to start on June sixth. And that is it for me. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I share your thoughts, just wonderful people of Gimmay and the. And their graciousness and came away very impressed with their. Um, attitude towards, you know, libraries and and children and. Uh, they expressed to us several times, I mean, their concerns over their very low birth rate and. And and the different things that they're trying to do and I just. Through thick and thin and a lot of rain, um, they. They were very flexible and very gracious and standing there holding umbrellas and. Um, trying to keep us relatively dry and it was very nice. The food was wonderful. I want to cover a couple of things. Last last Wednesday, we had that, I'm on that T C C coordinating committee. Um, we actually spoke about. Changes, you know, the the staff is actually not just our staff, but the several of the engineers. Um, proposed to a a maximum of two applications per. Uh, category and actually the only one, the only city impacted by that. The last time around would have actually been Lakewood because we put in three in one category. The other, the other offer there was, um, you could put two in a category, but you could only win one. The city of Pualup is now a backer of that. They they are supporters of that. Um, and then uh. Pualup came up with about three more recommendations. One was kind of this nebulous. Visibility of the process, more transparency. Not sure how that's going to shake out, but that was a concern of ours the last time, so. I I think that that will work out. Pualup had another item and and uh. That no one could win more than six million dollars over two cycles. And I don't know, we're gonna have to have staff, our our staff look at that. Um, in preparation for next year. Um, I'm not quite sure where they got this from, but this is their proposal. And then they had another one that kind of kind of got tabled immediately. I'm not sure where this is going. I mean, I I really, um, I'm I'm glad. Pualup has actually made some proposals. Um, the chair of the committee seems more interested in operating procedures of the committee. There's been some changes in the operating, you know, you know, it's like wordsmithing, operating procedures. So I'm not, I'm not quite sure. The Tacoma rep said, ah, you know, I'm, I I, you know, they were, I thought gonna make some proposals and and he was like. Ah, no, I need to know more about these, you know, and so the phrase of the day became unforeseen consequences. Of any of the changes that we would make. So I'm I'm not, I I think when we get there next month, depending on who shows up. What's gonna happen and what our report will be to the PCRC. Um, we'll we'll see. I don't know that we we can come to. Um, I'm hoping we can come to some kind of some constructive improvements. Um, what apparently is off the table is this very. Complicated process that we have compared to the other counties. Uh, the scoring is more complicated, the. The um, applications themselves are more complicated, the you know, it's everything. Having to do with our processes is is fairly complicated compared to the other. Other areas. I don't think that that's going to change. One thing that became clear is though is there are less and less cities even participating. Like ten years ago, twelve years ago, there were seventy-one applications. Um, and of that. Thirty-something, less than half, but close to half, maybe forty percent came from what we term small cities. That would include, it's kind of everybody from Sumner up, from Sumner down. Sumner would be in the. Upper bracket, I guess, with us and even though there are only about ten thousand people, I'm not exact, I'm not gonna. Not gonna split hairs here, but it it was like six cities. Um, the last go around, they were almost, all the small cities were almost completely out. They were down to about ten applications. Total applications have fallen to about, I think, forty-one from seventy-something. And of that, thirty-one are the larger cities, right? So the smaller cities are almost almost gone out of the process. Um, but there are disagreements over that as to why, right? Um, I mean, I would say, well, it's. Process doesn't really. The issue then becomes centers and that becomes a bigger issue, right? That we've we've made the decision that the money should go towards centers. So I'm gonna deal with Mr. Caulfield and staff and try to figure that out by next, by this time next month. We'll hopefully we'll have some recommendations to make the PCRC. Um, PCRC meeting. Yeah, um, we need staff help. Mr. Caulfield, Ms. Spear.
Already sent that to them.
Yeah. Um, because we're voting on. The HAP housing goals. Which actually theoretically, we have to produce less housing, but different kinds of house. Um, I think it was three hundred units less than what we were being asked to do under Vision twenty fifty or something. The issue then goes to number twenty-nine on this, the county's um, ordinance here that. The the meth, the the two methods allocating housing unit growth by moderate. Low, very low and extremely low income housing households and emergency housing. Emergency shelters and permanent supportive housing. Method A, and I know Tiffany and Miss Spear spoke to us about this, but we we're gonna really have to nail this down in the next. Seventy-two hours. Method A is described as an equal share where each jurisdiction plans for the same percentage of its new housing unit target. For each income category. Method B is described as a fair share where jurisdictions plan for the same percentage of total housing in each. Income category by twenty forty-four. Method B recognizes existing affordable housing stock and allows jurisdictions to count it toward the total housing need. To give you some idea, within the packet we've received, there's only. The next section is Pierce County. Pierce County. Chooses method A to allocate. Housing unit growth by moderate, low, very low and extremely low income households. So then. Um, in the packet that we received, um, the city of DuPont, so a smaller city. Um, I'm writing on the the mayor writes, I'm writing on behalf of the city of DuPont. To express the city's strong opposition to the Growth Management Coordinating Committee's potential income banned allocation method. Recommendation to the Pierce County Regional Council. And so they, in a recent briefing, a recommendation for the adoption of the Washington State. Housing tool, method B for determining income band allocation of required housing. Capacity for cities within Pierce County, so. The recommendation to the PCRC is B. The county wants A. DuPont is. The proposed method B is counter to the intent as one-size-fits-all approach. It eliminates the ability for cities in the county to establish housing policies and goals that are actually feasible, so. They, the proposed method B sets up cities to fail and in doing so fails the populations that most need housing options, so. I'm I'm completely confused, so I don't know if we want to pop. A or B, but I it is setting up, I think, to be a real fight on Thursday night and it will and and and. Fights the word. I mean, it's gonna be. Knock them drag out with big implications for us depending on how it goes. So, we need to hear from staff as to what they want to do, or maybe you and I should have a meeting with them on Wednesday or Thursday.
Makes sense. Shelter bed capacity too that's in that allocation, so.
Yeah. I'll just, you know what, I'll just leave it at that. I won't be here next Monday. Oh, yeah, I'm fine with the whatever you guys want to do on the Buffalo.
You, Councilmember Laura Sella.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'll start out with the Buffalo Soldier Museum support. I I am in agreement to the twenty-five hundred dollar level. And then a couple of notes. Uh, first, I I concur that I love that. Daisy came out to approach council for help and it really shows how we can. Engage with the citizens of our community and and reach out and help them and get them the services that they need. Uh, and it was great timing with us passing the ordinance for for possession. Uh, I think it will all connect and hopefully we can get folks out to her complex to do some enforcement. I, uh, talking on the Public Works Week proclamation we had, uh, it's it, to me, it's. Great that we have uh, something to the tune of about seventeen transportation projects in work right now in the city. Uh, which is tremendous and it's a great use of our resources, uh, as uh, I met with. An officer at the fishing event and he talked about sidewalks and streetlights are. What what helps us to be a welcoming city and a safe city, so I appreciate that. Uh, talking about the fishing event, uh, that was that was awesome. It went on Saturday. Uh, at Harry Todd Park, our Parks Department put on a great event partnering with uh, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, the Quanis Club and a couple other groups. Uh, I met several city employees down there, um, that I had met at other times, um, but one specifically, a gentleman named Kyle. Who works for our Streets Maintenance Department, uh, and he was he was down there, uh, helping kids learn to fish. Uh, and then he left and came back with his own family and was fishing, uh, so it really, really kind of closed, closed the circuit there. Uh, I helped a number of kids catch their first fish ever, which was really cool. Got lots of uh, fish guts and blood and worms on my hands, which was, which was great, uh, and just lots, lots and lots of fun. Um, it was beautiful setting, it was well managed and some really happy people. I also attended the uh, Coral Park Soul District Board Meeting last week, uh, as the representative from City Council. Uh, they recognized three employees of the year, uh, and uh, the superintendent talked about uh. Support activities over the summer for some of the teens in our community and how they're hoping to partner with the YMCA to set up. Uh, evening programs from five to ten PM for teens during the summer, uh, to give them something to do and I hope that was a great program. Uh, and I think that's all I've got. Also, the farmer's market coming up, I'm looking forward to that. I attended every year. Uh, and will continue to because that's a great place to get uh, lots of. Good stuff for our families, uh, and I love that they embrace the community by taking Snap and EBT stuff uh, from our people who use them. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Lots of good stuff coming up. Councilmember Anderson. Done? You're next.
Thank you. Of two, one questionable and one very questionable choice for PCRC, I choose B. Uh, because of the present array of our housing, I think A would have. A more dramatic negative benefit. I can see where DuPont's coming from. DuPont isn't really. A city, it's housing development. And so what they're being asked to do is to put low-income housing in what's left, which is the best slots. In DuPont, which were saved because they had views in their or higher-end houses. While, uh, you know, I agree with the the need for our uh. Drug ordinances, ordinance, prevention or possession and use ordinance. We still have to emphasize to the community that it's the legislature who in the long term can better fix its mistakes. And it's because of the legislature's mistakes that we are where we are. I'm glad to hear you had such a great time in Korea. I had similar experiences and uh. Uh, I'm glad that we could share. Also, I note that talking about the foliage there, uh, recognize the majority of Korea was defoliated seventy years ago. It was literally defoliated. The um. On the fourth, while you were gone, I attended the Pierce County Law Enforcement Memorial Service, which was held. Uh, South Hill, the top of South Hill, well-attended. Uh, as always, a solemn but nice event. Uh, on the eleventh, I attended Lake City Community Association Meeting. Uh, the two things they expressed the most concern about when. Variety issues were the pursuit law and open drug use around RVs that show up in their neighborhood.
Around what?
Open, open drug use around RVs that show up in their neighborhood. You know, they say they come and people park by the side of the road and stay there for a while and do their deals and leave their stuff and. Nobody wants that in their neighborhood. I, and on the thirteenth, I attended the SSMCP Electoral Officials Council. So for the. Eleventh year in a row, I ended up being part of the program backed into that, so uh. You could only be two places at the same time.
Exactly, yeah.
And Bruce could only be two places at the same time, so I don't know what they called me, but it let off.
That's it. Very good, thank you. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will start off with the Buffalo Soldiers event. I would so agree with the two thousand dollar. Twenty-five hundred dollar sponsorship.
Mr. Caulfield, you got your concurrence.
And on Thursday, I did attend the SSMCP Official Electoral Officials Council that was well-attended. Good information shared. Um, let's see. I too will be speaking Saturday at Coral Park Technical College. My role is to talk about why I continue to support. Coral Park Technical College. And public comment is something that I really appreciate when people come and talk to us about something, we can do something like that.
Right.
Meaningful things, I appreciate that and we will do what we can to help them and there's often times when we are able to. Help them, so I appreciate that. Uh, the trip was absolutely outstanding. It was interesting, they apologized viciously because. It was raining and they had to change some of the plans that they had for us, so they continued to apologize because of that. But we were having a great time in in seeing that country and learning about the how they do things. I would really, my takeaway from that whole trip was the fact that how well the entire community embraced their city. And took care of it. It was, it was obvious that they um, took pride in their community, so that was good. And that's it.
Great. One one alibi that was the phrase of the trip, we talked about the cleanliness of their city. And the fact that there wasn't any apparent graffiti. And they looked at us and said, graffiti? Why would someone do that to another person's property? Ding ding ding, and the light went off. One one alibi on things and events, I did attend. The Master Builders Association Forum, Housing Forum on Thursday, the eleventh. I was a speaker there, so I wasn't able to do the SSMCP thing. And that was preceded by an invitation from the mayor of Pualup to attend the Pierce County Prayer Breakfast in his city, so I went to that and then I went to the MBA thing, so. Apologies, apologies. apologies apologies for not being at the South Sound Military Committee Partnership Meeting. It is tough to be in three places at once. So with that, thank you all very much for a great evening. We're adjourned.